Welcome to Mile Ground Motors where we specialize in used four-wheel-drive pickups and SUVs. All vehicles are clearly marked and come with a free Carfax report. Fair, good, or excellent credit, we have the financing option for you. Mile Ground Motors located on the Mile Ground in Morgantown. Always open at mileground.com.
At The Landing Dental Spa, our goal is to provide quality dental care and a relaxed spa-like atmosphere. Dental chairs with heat and massage, warm neck wraps, and personal TVs make your appointment as stress-free as possible. Located off the Pierpont exit, now accepting new patients of any age. Call 304-594-2200 today and visit our website at www.the landingdentalspa.com to schedule an appointment. The Landing Dental Spa, a healthy smile with peace of mind.
Okay, welcome this evening. Just so you know, we are trying out a new system here. It's all online, it's available to the public, and tonight we are testing the ability to record, which will also be placed online. So, we might be putzing around a little bit, trying to figure out what we're doing and remembering to turn off and turn on our mics, but hang with us. In a couple of meetings, we should have this down pat. This evening, it's a pleasure to have our meeting because, as usual, we find it very rewarding ourselves, as many of you do, to recognize the achievements of our staff, our faculty, and our students. So, we have several awards to give tonight, and each of the four members will be handing out a certain number of awards. The first award is the 2015 Dominion Post Girl Basketball Player of the Year, and that's Olivia Sebey from Morgantown High School, who's coached by Jason White. Is Olivia here?
I don't believe she's here this evening.
Okay. So, we're all pleased to recognize Olivia, and we'll give her a hand in absent. (Applause) Olivia, when you tune us in, you can see we've talked about you. Secondly, we have the 2015 Montague County Service Employee of the Year, who is Margaret Yost. She's a teacher's aide at Suncrest Elementary, and her principal is Joanne Hines. So, would you come forward?[266.02][266.02](Applause) Okay, Monica, would you like to say anything?
Yeah. It's always just been a privilege working with the Long County school. I love working with the kids, and I've worked with, I have been on transfer day in the rift many times, just had to throw that out there, and, but I've always been a great school, been working with great people, and any of the parents that are here, I just want to let you know that your children are in the best of hands. It's been an honor.[327.81][327.81](Applause)
Hi. I would like to say just a couple of words about Ms. Jo, as everyone refers to her. She, I've had the privilege of working with a lot of professionals in my years in Montague County, but I have never, ever met anyone who is more dedicated to children than she is. And this is Tammy Klimkowski, this is her kindergarten teacher that works with Ms. Jo, and she is just amazing, and I cannot tell you how deserved this is. So, thank you so much for the honor.[366.03][366.03](Applause)
Ms. Klimkowski, would you like to say anything?
I can just say, it has been a pure, pure pleasure working with this lady. She is absolutely fabulous with the children, and it is all about the children. It's not about her, it's not about tooting her own horn, it's about the kids. She purely loves those children, and it's been an honor to work with her. I'm going to miss her because we're separated next year. Yeah, so it's gonna be sad.
And if I can follow up on that statement, it's not by Ms. Jo's choice.
No, no.
God bless Ms. Jo, honest to goodness, she has been on the transfer list.
Quite a few times.
Quite a few times, and it's unfortunate, her set of circumstances, not that she's the least senior employee, but she may be the least senior employee in the school, or the teacher that we are removing or transferring, and I can tell you, she's always been outstanding. She knows it, she accepts the letter, she moves on, she's got such a positive outlook because where she lands, she's always done an outstanding job. So, Ms. Jo, thank you for that.
Thank you.[435.12][435.12](Applause)
Okay. Now, we have the West Virginia School Psychologist Association 2015 Exemplary Child Advocating Award. That award goes to our Assistant Superintendent Donna Tellerico.[455.31][455.31](Applause) So, on behalf of my Board of Education, we are very thankful that you won this award, and we know that it's absolutely true, you're the strongest advocate besides our teachers. We appreciate that.
Very much, thank you.
Congratulations.[482.22][482.22](Applause) Thank you. This team back here, school psychologists, put this nomination together, but what I have to say just very briefly here, thanks, of course, to them, or really, this Board of Education, their vision for the student support services in this system. We were in Charleston, and without a doubt, for all the folks that are sitting in this room, people came up to us, they want to work in Montague County schools. It's a tribute to this Board of Education, the vision that they have, the caring that they have. I just get to be the messenger for that vision. So, I'm appreciative of that, and these folks that sit back here that actually won the real awards. So, thank you. Well, we want you to know, we can't do without the messenger. Thank you.[536.12][536.12](Applause)
And Mrs. Parsons, if I can just interject also, I agree. Mrs. Tellerico has been able to fashion and be the architect that built the layout, and I certainly do want to acknowledge her in that, acknowledge the award as being well-received. And you're right, the board is approving the kinds of things that we know that are important for our students, but without an architect to build that structure, then sometimes we don't have the direction that we need. So, kudos. Absolutely, it's well-deserved. And school psychologists, thank you for making her look good.[571.12][571.12](Laughter)
Okay, thank you. Now, we have the 2015 West Virginia School Psychologist of the Year, Lisa Gaynor, who works for Stephanie Overly. Lisa?[587.32][587.32](Applause)
Congratulations. Okay, this is a, you're done, thank you. Lisa, would you like to say anything? What do you want to say about all this?[611.12][611.12](Laughter) I'd just like to thank Stephanie Overly, our supervisor, and our team of psychologists who makes it really easy to come to work every day, and of course, Donna, who's sponsoring the whole thing. Thank you very much.[625.12][625.12](Applause)
Stephanie, you have something to say?
Oh, I have lots to say.[634.12][634.12](Laughter) No, they actually told me that everything's being recorded, and I have to be very careful about what I say.[641.12][641.12](Laughter) Actually, I did want to comment in Donna's award, even though that award is for, it's recognized by the school psychologists, it's for her advocacy in all areas, and that would have to do with the academic coaches, with the nurses, the mental health provisions and things that have been implemented, and of course, that expanded and that implementation of that national model. The thing that I'd like to say about Lisa is that Lisa's probably, her greatest legacy is that she is a wonderful trainer or mentor for interns, and indeed, her interns, Marshall always tries to have an intern come and work with us, and work with Lisa. Lisa's interns, just in the six years that I've been here, one of her interns is the lead psychologist for Raleigh County Schools, one of her interns is the lead psychologist for Fayette County Schools, one of her interns is implementing a psychological services department for Hardy County Schools, and intern training there, and so, it's just, I think, a tribute to her, this legacy that she's leaving here. It's not like she's that old, but it is quite, quite something for her to be extremely proud of, and we're extremely proud of that.
Good, thank you.[723.12][723.12](Applause) Wow, off to a good start, all right. Next, we have the 2015 Innovation Award for Outstanding Delivery of Psychological Services. The winner of that award is Angela Hayes, who also works for Stephanie Overly.[744.62][744.62](Applause)
(Inaudible)
Mine is planned?
No, mine aren't. I don't know, I can say whatever I want. I appreciate it. Oh, goodness, well, thank you, Stephanie, my goodness. The nomination, the first time, I was half-stunned, but privileged, and then the second time was beyond amazed, so, thanks, everybody.[767.12][767.12](Applause)
I would just like to say that in regard to Angela, that Angela, I love doing portfolio development, Angela, because Angela always comes with some new something that she wants to do. She is probably the trainer of trainers. Every year, we kind of have this competition, who's going to provide the most training. Angela has surpassed me this year. I think she's done 17 days of safety care training. She really comes up with these wonderful ideas. She did a little program for at-risk girls moving from middle school over to the high school. She's archived records to look at, try to get teachers to match interventions with evaluation findings, and she helped Mason Dixon write their grant, so I just am so proud of my staff. And it was a little embarrassing in Charleston, honestly, because there's only five awards, and we walked away with three of them, so.
All right, keep being embarrassed.[831.62][831.62](Laughter) All right, thank you very much, good work. Next, Ron, you're waiting?
Yes. I understand it.
I know. Ron has an award for the 2015 Geography, the second place winner, who is Ipsyda Tingi.[863.82][863.82](Applause)
Her coach is Mrs. Mendel.
Oh, actually, not her job, it was Miss Thomas Camp, and Miss Boilstein was here.
Boilstein?
Yes.
Another photo.
Oh, sorry.[883.12][883.12](Laughter) I won with Boilstein, too.
I would like to say, Ipsyda not only took second place, but she was the first girl in 25 years that placed in the top five.
Wow.[896.62][896.62](Applause)
Congratulations. Are you parenting?
Yeah.[900.62][900.62](Laughter)
Did they have anything to do with this at all?
Yes. I think it was my mom that really pushed me to study harder, and then my dad helped me revise everything, and my brother just was kind of like, I have to leave something for him, so I went to another pitching board, so.
Your brother fit in.
Yeah.
All right. Good job, parents, where's the brother? Didn't he show up?
He's back. Dad's brother back here.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have the 2015 Math Field Day First Place Winners, and they are Kenneth Wang of North Elementary, coached by Mr. Gutler, Frank Liu of Suncrest Middle School, coached by Mr. Posey, Michael Yan and Raymond Liu of Morgantown High School, coached by Mrs. Nag. Congratulations.[975.12][975.12](Applause) Congratulations. Let's have the teachers come up and stand behind them for these pictures.
(Inaudible)
Okay, so, would the students like to say a bit, think about how hard this was?
It's easy for him.
Oh, it's easy.[998.12][998.12](Laughter)
I'll just say that on record.
So, what did it take to win?
Studying.
Studying, and how many hours was that?
Just make up a number.
A lot.
Twenty-one-five.
Yeah. Way too many, all right. And would any of the teachers who are here, the sponsors like to say anything? Coaches? If you're just proud?
I feel like I should clarify, that Lois Swineford is really responsible for a large part of the practice that went into Math Field Day at Suncrest Middle School, so I feel good for her, starting in January, but she really did the work.
She got it started. All right, well, thank you very much. All right, next, we have the 2015 State Math Counts First Place Team Winners, Winner, which is Suncrest Elementary School, made up of, the team is made up of Frank Liu, Ipsyda Tingi, Abraham Goodman, and Peter Liu.[1059.12][1059.12](Applause) Okay. Suncrest Middle School, and the coaches, Mrs. Mendel?
Yes.
Yes, we got that right, all right.[1075.12][1075.12](Laughter)
There you go. Yeah. You're done, thank you.
Wait, don't go away. Freeze. Do you have anything to say, or anybody to say, like, parents, or principals, or coaches?
I think Miss Swineford did a lot for us, especially whenever, even before eighth grade, or before seventh, for Abraham, and she taught us a lot, and helped us move forward, and then Miss Mendel just being there to take in her place was really nice.
Great, all right. Now, before you leave, principals, Ms. Webb, Mr. Napoleon, would you have something to say about these folks?
Yeah, before Mrs. Swineford left, she did train the other teacher here to take over, too, and so she did an excellent job, so we're real happy that Paige decided to do that. She spent a lot of time here with these kids, and of course, it's, there's a big problem that goes on here. These kids go to school, and they order pizza almost once a week, or whatever, to feed themselves, and it takes a lot of work and a lot of time, and they, and they put that work in, and you can see it pays off, so we're real happy and real proud of them, so good job.
Great. Ms. Webb?
And we're proud of you for building the foundation at our school, and being so dedicated and being such hard workers, and we also want to thank the parents for your support of seven years that we had you at North, and we're proud of you. Good job, keep it up.
I'd like to say something else, too. As Ipsyda said earlier, Miss Swineford really was a huge force at Suncrest Middle School, and when she left, it was a huge halt, and she had put together the Math Counts program, and she asked me to take it over, and I was a little nervous, and so I thought, oh, wow. It was daunting, she had a pretty big spot, but I took over the materials, and the kids really, they did a tremendous job, and it is these kids, they, they do so much work. They go and they do their regular load of school, and they have extracurricular activities and interests, and then on top of it, they're doing math four to 10 hours a week in addition to their regular load, and it's just, it's impressive, and I was really awed and humbled by watching them come in. I would give them like problems and problems, and they'd take them home and come back the next day and say, I need to see the answers, and I was like, but they, they did a tremendous job, and they took first place at the state level, was incredible for Math Counts. What Math Counts does at that point, then, is they take the top four seeds in the state, and actually, Ben Sheehan, if you would come up here, please? At this, Frank Liu took first place, individual Ben took second place at the state level, and Abraham took third, the fourth student from Charleston, Nicholas, Nicholas Halibus? Still pronouncing his last name. But the four of us went to Boston last week for the national competition, where they did an outstanding job. Frank individually placed in the top 20th percent, it was.
Top 25, basically.[1272.41][1272.41](Laughter)
And the wife behind it were Ipsyda and Peter also placed right there at fifth and sixth, and so it was just, it was awesome to be their coach this year, because they took it all the way, they did a lot of work, so.
Okay, parents, hold up your hands, and we'll see. Yes, all right. Thank you.[1299.12][1299.12](Applause) And one more, 2015 State Math Counts Individual Winner is Frank Liu.[1310.12][1310.12](Applause)
This is 20% of the board giving you.[1313.12][1313.12](Laughter)
Time to go home and study? Well, thank you so much for being here this evening, thank you for all the hard work you did, and.
If I could just interject also, Dr. Ladd, will you stand, please? Last week or two weeks ago, Dr. Ladd put together a list of all of our winners. I know we just recognized our first-place winners tonight, but Montague County had, what would you say, about 30 that were in the top three, four on a statewide basis for some of the math competition, and it spans also some other schools as well. I know we're recognizing mostly North and Suncrest Middle students as well, as well they should be deserving, but also, Dr. Ladd, if you remember, had several others as well, so we have a lot to be proud of in our math department, and I realize that we stand on the shoulders of giants in Mrs. Swineford, but it sounds like to me also that you two have really carried the weight, so thank you both very much. I'm going to carry the tradition.
Yes, thank you. You're a hard worker.[1372.12][1372.12](Applause) So, if you would like, yes?
And fair enough, Ipsyda, Ipsyda wanted to add, like, she was in North Elementary, so the base was really good. Thank you to Mr. Gundler, who was her fifth-grade teacher, and also to Ms. Webb, who was the principal that time, and also coming up to the Suncrest Middle, it is not only the parents or the teachers, and also everyone else, principal, and whoever, staff, coming in to volunteer, everyone is really great. Thank you so much. And Ms. Boilstein, one of her mentors, and to Ms. Mendel, too, thank you so much, and I know that you support as county schools, and that's how we show, the parents show support to the students. Our kids grow like this, and that's how we have the joy to see this, and thank you so much for supporting this.
Okay, so all of you hard workers need to go work for, and we'll let you go right now, if you'd like to. You can say if you'd like.
By the way, congratulations, and thank you for coming.
No, thank you.
(Inaudible)
I love numbers.
It's like second grade.
I'll call them all, I need to get some information on her, but did she have a plan? She have planned a future?
Oh, Miss Hicks has, this principal, back in the green jacket, back by the door.
Miss Hicks is a princess.
He's a more than ten line.
You're more than ten, huh?
It's gross. Okay, we'll continue with the agenda at this point in time, we have, we recognize those people who have worked in the system and have passed away, or who've been students or staff, and so this evening, we would like you to remember, we have a moment of silence for Theodore Robert Hastings, who was a student at South Middle School, who died on April 29, and Frank Troy, senior former teacher at MTEC, who died on April 28, so, a moment of silence in their memory, please. Thank you. Okay. Next. Next, wow, we have three resolutions, and we didn't have a meeting last week, so the dates are a little different, but the meeting is certainly intended. The first is Administrative Assistance Day, formerly known as Professional Secretaries Day, was created to recognize contributions of office support staff in business and government. And whereas Montague County Schools administrative staff represent a broad range of job titles and ever-expanding responsibilities, whereas with greater emphasis on teamwork in the office, administrative staff make key contributions to working as a team, and whereas the caring, diplomacy, and dedication of Montague County staff, of schools administrative staff merit the appreciation of the students, parents, staff, and administrators, it is resolved that the Montague County Board of Education proclaims today, April 22, 2015, which has passed, but we appreciated it, as Administrative Professionals Day, in recognition of the many outstanding services and contributions provided by our administrative professionals, and we could not carry on without them, who do a great job. The next resolution recognizes that we had made that as National Teacher Day. Whereas teachers make up this public school's grade, and we just saw it's hard to work, the results of the work, they're done. Whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories, therefore, I Barbara Parsons, serving as President of Montague County Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 5, 2015, as National Teacher Appreciation Day. I urge that, have we not done so already? We observe this day and the meaning of our teachers, and the actions and the participation that they provide, that we recognize them with respect and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives. So, if you have a teacher that influenced your life. that the Montague County Board of Education proclaims today, April 22, 2015, which has passed, but we appreciated it, as Administrative Professionals' Day in recognition of the many outstanding services and contributions provided by our administrative professionals, and we could not carry on without them. Do a great job. The next resolution recognizes that we had made that as National Teacher Day. Whereas teachers make up this public schools great, and we just saw the hard work, the results of the work, they've done. Whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship. And whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. And whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Therefore, I, Barbara Parsons, serving as President of the Montague County Board of Education, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 5, 2015, as National Teacher Appreciation Day. I urge that, have we not done so already? We observe this day and the meaning of our teachers and the actions and the participation that they provide, that we recognize them with respect and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives. So if you have a teacher that influenced your life, that person still around, call. Thank you. And Nurses' Day. This is the proclamation regarding National School Nurse Day. Whereas children are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas all students have a right to have their health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas children today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. Whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children in youth by developing and providing programs and leadership. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning, and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be it resolved that the Montague County Board of Education celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere, and efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the effective delivery of healthcare in our schools, and shows gratitude for nation's school nurses, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Okay. And they are important to us. Truly, school nurses deal with more and varied issues than any nurse in any specific setting in a hospital or in a physician's office, so that's a lot of these nurses. All right. Next, we have delegations. And this evening, we have Kathy Werner, who would like to speak about the work band position. Okay, you have five minutes.
I'm here today representing a delegation of band parents from both...
Just one.
Yes. Should I come up here?
Yes.
I'm here today representing a delegation of band parents from both Mountaineer Middle School and University High School. We represent the 300-plus...
Dawn, I can't shut.
You represent 300-plus band students and their families. I've had a child in these band programs for the past nine years, and have seen the benefits of music in my children's education. We would like the board and Dr. Devano to take care in making the final selection for the open position of the Mountaineer Middle School Band Director. Mountaineer Middle School, Geel Lake Middle School, has had a longstanding tradition of exemplary band instruction. This can be shown in the over 20 years of superior ratings at the Region 10 Band Festival. This is a ranking of the band itself. The bands do not compete against other bands, but against themselves. The festival chairperson has been quoted as saying, "Mountaineer Middle School's band is the best middle school at the festival this year." This has translated into Mountaineer Middle School being selected seven times as the West Virginia State Auto Band. And with Mountaineer Middle School and Westwood's bands leading into University High School, this has translated into 22 straight years of superior ratings for the high school as well. In addition, UHS has also been awarded State Auto Band six times. Please remember that honors and awards may not be the best way to describe a person, but behind those awards shows a teacher's passion and dedication to their students and their fields of study. In addition, memberships in professional organizations such as the National Band Masters only strengthens that individual's commitment to their craft. One final factor we would like you to consider is where the candidates are currently working. There may be benefits to a candidate that is already familiar with the Montague County system. With all this said, it has come to our attention that one of the final candidates may not be qualified, excuse me, as qualified as the others, but has a personal friendship with the administration. We would never ask the board to hire a specific person. This is not our purpose today. We would ask that you look at the records of all the final candidates and make an independent decision while considering the school's administrative recommendations as well as the hiring committee and that school's recommendation. Thank you for your time, and please postpone the approval of this position so you can consider the candidate's credentials until the court decision.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent of the Board, this is Gus Polo.
Board members, Madam President, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our probationary department, basically, this evening. We have a probationary officer at Morgantown High School, and I'd like for also Mrs. Nika Rubenstein to please stand. And Nika obviously works with our probation officers, and we have before us maybe an application in relationship to this application process for the possibility of an additional probationary officer. So I'd like for Nika, if she can, and I believe Pete's here, and maybe the board can see the value of, in fact, a probationary officer at Morgantown High School, as well as what it's done for your test, as well as Clay Patel. And then I'll have a recommendation after we have the district speaker speak to that lady, please.
We have Ms. Six as well.
Ms. Six as well, thank you. You want to just bring them up? That's fine. You'll probably need to come in front of the microphone if you can.
Dr. Devano, if I could begin here this evening. All of our schools are represented, and Denise Porter would have been here this evening. Her daughter is being honored at WUU with a presentation with Dr. G, so she's excused from this evening for that, but we did want to present and unite in front to this evening for several reasons. It's rather fortuitous that this evening we're talking about all of the services that this Board of Education has provided for the students in this community. Certainly, attendance has been front and center for several years. This department, in the last several years, has grown from one position to a myriad of different positions in different ways. We have elementary intervention programs through the Burlington Program. We have again some intervention services contracted at the middle school level, and again, Denise Rubenstein is at the forefront of, at the leadership position. Our assistant principals at all of our high schools have taken tremendous leadership roles in working with the court system. We have great respect from the court system because of our due diligence in making certain that our records are accurate and that we are present. I have to commend Judge Susan Tucker for her active role in working with us in the truancy area. Tonight, I know you have met at one other occasion, Laura Demnard. Laura is the probation officer that works at all three of our high schools. She has done a tremendous job. This is her first year in this position. Last year, the gentleman that worked with us decided he didn't want to use his talents in another position, so he did move on. But Laura has been an excellent replacement for us. She's here to answer questions for you, but we are here because we have the opportunity early on to ask this board to consider supporting a second probation officer. Because it is a contracted position, we must ask the court to ask for that support. But as you probably know, the law is changed at the state level. Denise has her attendance committee here tomorrow. They'll give you a little bit of information about how this is impacting us. We don't yet know how much impact it's going to have, but the most serious impact is going to be at our middle school level. It's going to change significantly some of the requirements at the court system level and some requirements that we are going to have. We believe there will be some matching money. I do not want to let that get by us. And if we delay too long in presenting this opportunity to you, I am fearful that that opportunity of matching funds might go to someone else. All of the state is being asked to pursue probation officers for their school system because they have the correct connection to the court system. Because we have been so successful, and again, I want you to hear directly from those that are involved, the number of preventative opportunities that we have had, as well as the connection to the court system, has shown that it does work. We have a lot of data and statistics that we will share with you so that you can look at those. Not asking you blindly to support something that we don't have data to share, but however, I am asking to get out in front of this so that if this opportunity comes our way and the judge is willing to support this, that our Board of Education would be able to financially support some funding toward this. So we're asking early on, because we don't have all the details, but again, I don't want it to be delayed and therefore somehow we get left behind. So...
Ms. Polo, Laura is a graduate of MHS as well, so she's back service in this role as well.
Now, before we get any further, let me understand, we are going to apply for a grant to support these officers, probation officers?
A second probation officer. We are... A second one that would work at the middle school level.
Okay.
My role is to sell you on the first one, that you did tag, and then after they're finished, then I want to be able to talk to you about, I think Mrs. Tellerica was just a little nervous, maybe I might have forgot, but then we want to talk to you about the possibility of a second. So, but I want the board to hear that the role and how crucial it plays in our high schools, and kind of in that direction.
But we already have this one funded.
This is already funded, that's correct.
All right.
We're asking for a continuation of funding.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So Denise, why don't you go ahead, please?
Well, as you know, we've had a probation officer in effect for two years. This will be our second year since we've started the truancy project, and this was a new thing, and so we were kind of the forefront in the counties to do this. Now, it's our superintendent's and the board approving this, and it has been successful. The name has subsequently changed, it's no longer really a school-based probation officer. They are now truancy diversion specialists, according to the new law that has come out, because that is what their job is. They are not punitive, and they are not going into the schools to be punitive. Their intervention, or their role is intervention. So they do not go in, these students aren't going into the court system. Prior to this referendum, we had high numbers of students that were being referred into courts because that's what the law stated. When we had the probation officer come in, she, and of course, Erin before that, but then Laura, Laura has done fabulous. She's connected with these students, students who aren't even really on her caseload, you know her. She's in the hall, she's being seen, she's present. And she's working with these students. If there's absences, she gets referrals, she goes, she talks to them, finds out why they're missing. You know, it could be classes, it could be, you know, their student, it could be they're behind, but she's going to this preventative in before I even see it, before it even comes across my desk. Because once it comes across my desk, it's judicial. So I don't see as many from the high schools now, unless they're in real serious cases. Laura's already handled that. There's a little bit more bite with the probation officer, with that little name after it. They listen, she has the power of the court behind her, and these students know that there's a probation officer working with them. What we haven't really focused on, I mean, we do have preventative measures in our middle schools, but we don't, with the law changing, this is all coming, I feel, at a really good time. Because with the law changing, there's a lot more responsibility on the schools now, huge. And we have our attendance meeting, as Ms. Tellerica said, tomorrow. And we actually have a magistrate and prosecuting attorneys attending that. This is how large and what an impact this new law is going to make on attendance. So we really need to be on top of it. Putting a probation officer in the middle school where our numbers are the most high right now would be a preventative measure. We would not see as many cases going through. I truly feel that with what we've seen now with our probation officer in our high schools. And if you hit them at the middle school, like we're hitting at the elementary school, and I mean, I've heard you, Dr. Parsons, even you know, and you, Ms. Walker, I mean, you guys have always said, get them at elementary, get them out. So if we hit them now at the middle school, you know, the impact we're going to have is high school. But they work with her every day, and they work with these students. I'm seeing the talent...
Why don't you explain the wall, maybe, on the course of the day, or maybe what we expect from both our sister-in-law's relationship and the role that she plays?
Our sister-in-law's...
Maybe your sister-in-law's sister can address that, is that okay?
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, they are the attendance says it needs for the schools, so...
Tell us how it plays out for Billy, please.
Usually when she comes in, she's here twice a week for Morgantown High School. There's usually a crowd of what new kids she needs to see. She already has a caseload of the children that she follows up with. She does random drug testing on those students. She does preventative measures on the new students that maybe have through five days, which is really an early onset. She makes contact with parents. She's in the lunchroom, she's outside, she's in the hallway. Yes, she has a presence, yes, she has a name, but the judicial system on the juvenile side is rehabilitative, it's not punitive. And she does a very nice job delivering that information to those children, preventing them from going to Judge Tucker's court. So it has benefited me and the students greatly. I have come from 2006, when we had some truancy issues, to the onset of this, where I did 150 court cases. I'm down to 35. That is a tremendous chunk out of the judicial side because of her, because of having that direct linkage to the court system. So I thank her for that, and I thank you all for supporting that greatly.
I too would like to thank you for having Laura and hearing before her on the word. The real pleasure, where I'm seeing the value is, it's very easy for a child to get five unexcused absences. In fact, we allow kids to miss five days and still not take their final exams, and so it's kind of a magic number. If five, they get the letter that says you got five unexcused absences, certain things can happen. The trick is not getting them to the next stage, which is going to court, and that's where I'm seeing it. I'm still writing approximately the same number of letters I'm pushing. Over 350 letters that were written this year, probably letters, and it's a proportion of those which wind up going to court, is where I'm seeing the reduction. And I can attribute a lot of it to Laura, being able to come in, and I too have a list ready for, kind of thing, I've got a file cabinet that she knows how to get into and how it works and all that. And she just started pulling names and started talking to the kids, and then the excuses come in, and they're no longer in trouble of getting truancy and going to court, they're taking care of it at the lower level before it goes to the higher level. This is the season for attendance. I'm going to court tomorrow, I've been to court last week, I'm going to court next week, and I'm sure Ms. Six is doing the same thing. It's nice to have the diversion stuff going on before it gets to that point, because we're busy enough this time of year. So I squarely appreciate it, and she's done a really good job.
Laura?
I love it. Like I said, I mean, I work with some worthy people, and I really appreciate it, and they do a wonderful job of giving me the support I need. I think it's a worthy program. I think it really does help.
Laura, students are placed on probation. Do you monitor those as well?
I do. They get their own probation officers, but I do continue to monitor them. I help the other probation officers, because I'm at the schools a lot more than they are. So I can help them, but I'm their primary probation officer.
And you two days at MHS, UHS, and one day at Clay Patel?
Yes.
Board members, so that you know, this is a position sponsored by the State Supreme Court. And even though we pay for it, they've endorsed it, it has to be recommended by our judge, but one of our judges is in the county school system. And so what we're asking for is another Laura. If we could clone her, I think it'd be great, but it would be a program that's also going to work down in our middle schools, because we do have some attendance issues there as well. And so what I'd like to ask the board to do is to authorize the superintendent to start moving in a direction to be able to seek some permission from the judge, and then eventually the State Supreme Court about hiring a second probationary officer for the school system, knowing that that's part of the pupil services, is out of our levy account. Our levy does sponsor this, and we understand that we may get a grant with this as well and help offset it, at the cost of that. So I'd like to make that as an option.
Okay, do your motion. So move. Start your second. Start. I just have to tell you this, having worked with the legislature this past year, I'm finding it extremely frustrating on this very issue, raising the number of days from five to 10. I felt that we didn't serve the students, nor did it serve the counties, but the issue seemed to be that some counties did not have the preventative programs that we did. And by not having a preventative program, all the cases, or many, many more cases, went into the legal system and into the court system, which bogged everything down, caused a lot of resistance on the part of the legal system. They in turn accused the school systems of not doing what they were supposed to do. So I was so proud when we were working through these issues, trying to come up with a way to maintain what we were doing, that we were ahead of the game as far as being creative. And I think we attempt that with a lot of things, not just attendance, with behaviors, with troubled students, we do everything we can as early as we can. behaviors, with troubled students, we do everything we can as early as we can to minimize their failures. And so, I thought, you know, if all the counties had a preventative approach to it, got in early and started early, and it really became apparent then, the earlier you start the program, the better. Because these students, a lot of times when they got to the courts, the issue was they never turned in their excuses in all things, which I don't understand. In any event, I was very proud of our system. It seems to be working, we haven't had complaints from the judges and the magistrates that, you know, we're not doing our job. And so, even with the, the raising of the minimum number of days from five to 10, I think we'll, we'll do a very good job, and I really am supportive of this program. Because we know, people go to ten school, they drop out, have problems, and it's a lot harder to say we're not doing that, so. Any discussion? Nancy?
I'm just curious, so we, the middle school program would be six, seven, and eight?
Yes.
Okay, so we would go down to the sixth grade, and our elementary programs then would?
Still with Bermington.
So, this probation officer would have to, to work with?
Well, they wouldn't go into the elementary, we still have the prevention program, we have the Bermington contract and Title I, so we have four people that work with us, and it's extremely successful. I have to say our elementary percentage numbers, and I need to, really, you need to see those numbers. It's minimal, and as we all know, at the elementary level, it's not a student issue, it's a family issue. So, those, that's a different kind of situation. But those numbers and our percentages there are nothing less than 96%, 97%, 98% attendance there. So, our, our intervention prevention programs, they are very, very successful. But we do start to lose traction at the middle school. And if you don't have the right record-keeping, you lose respect in the judicial court system, and that's where I'm very concerned with the new regulations. So, it's not, it's not going to be easy, and tomorrow's going to be a tough meeting, and I'm thrilled that we have so many people coming. Two of the prosecuting attorneys are going to be here, one of the magistrate members is going to be here, as well as our own committee. So, I'm not sure who's going to all come out standing tomorrow, but it is going to be difficult to put all of this in place. So, it won't be easy, and this next piece here is just one small portion of it, but we would certainly appreciate that help at that level.
I also want to point out that as the county with excess levy, a lot of these services are, we're able to make available, not just through grants, but through our levies.
That's something.
And that is part of the reason some counties can't, and that's part of the reason that it became a legislative issue. So, prevention is where the founder of the court, and the levy certainly supports our ability to get in early and work with the students and their families.
So, where, where do you foresee in the middle school? Because it's such a hybrid of still a family issue, but also some student choice and not as much. She looks like she could fit right into the high school setting. So, I think it'll be interesting how we're able to staff the middle school, because anyone we put in there is not going to look like a middle school student, or not going to, it's just going to be really different. I think it's going to be very challenging. I'm not saying we don't need it, I just think it's going to be an interesting ball of wax to try to.
Well, it is dependent on the right hire, and again, I'm grateful that it was a collaboration to select Laura for this position. The court system let us be part of the hiring committee, even though obviously it's done from the state level, but again, Judge Tucker, Danika and I were on the hiring committee, and again, we feel we made a terrific choice. And the probation, just last week, we were in the committee, she received kudos from both sides of the table, our side as well as the probation office, because she has to work with both sides of the, of the table. So, but we have to make a good hire, and that does make all the difference here of whether we're successful or not.
Other day.
Mike, I've got one thing. What's coming down the pipe, and we're going to be discussing tomorrow, is a change in law which takes effect this summer. And you had mentioned that the threshold had actually gone up from five to 10, but the actuality then has gone down. At this point, kids get letters at five days of unexcused absence, starting next year, it's going to happen at three.
Okay.
And at five, there's going to be a meeting, where it used to take 10 consecutive days or 15 non-consecutive days to get referred to court. Now, it's just going to be 10. So, the threshold has dropped as to what constitutes truancy, and I think the prevention program is even more necessary next year than it is today.
And one other thing to add on that is now filings are supposed to be on the parent and the child code, so it's doubling up the work. So, at the middle school, that's why it's even so much more pertinent and just so important to have something there that's solid, that's consistent, is we are now going to file on the parent, but we're also going to be filing on the child. So, in middle school, you have that 12 and under, 13 and up, or 13 and up is always on circuit court, 12 and under is on the magistrate court against the parent. So, now it's, you know, to get those preventatives in is so important.
We're going to be, they're addressing our policy, and we're going to be bringing that to you all as soon as we can. Tomorrow will be official meeting, and we'll start that as well.
It's, it's, it's hard, it's a hard issue. Okay. All in favor of providing support for a second probation officer at the middle school levels, they are? Does opposed likewise? Motion, here.
Madam President, Board Members. I said Ted was here, Mr. Stevens.
Commander, are you right here?
All right, Ted, Brian, on cue, thank you very much. We have Suncrest Elementary update, Eastwood Elementary update, and we've got some questions or discussion on the MHS press box, the new options, and the Westwood Athletic Facility update. So, what I would recommend is we start off with the Suncrest Elementary update, is that what we have up first?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Brian, please.
Good evening. On Suncrest, we finally got some good news this past week. BP finally gave his permit, and so contractor's going full bore now. Previous to that, he had all erosion sedimentation controls pretty much complete, clearing and rubbing is complete. He isn't working on hauling out the debris, the stumps, the trees, the garbage, basically. But now that he's gotten his approval, he's got all his machines running. They're stripping topsoil this week, probably going to get the surveyor out there, start laying everything out this week as well, and then start getting laid out for his storm structures and building pad, stuff like that, so things are going to start moving on that end. And Eastwood?
Before we jump in, Ted, you want to address the, why don't we stay on the, stay on the Suncrest, please?
And also on Suncrest, we have some great news. The project, the building part of the project and the furnishings equipment is out for bids. It should hit the home this tomorrow, but the pre-bid will be May 26 here at the board office or the board room, and then the bid date on June 18 also here. So, things with the site work are moving forward, and we'll receive bids on the 18th, and hopefully award that in early July and continue to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions on Suncrest, Board Members?
What's the delay, what are we looking at on that delay? How many days do we delay on coming?
We're thinking almost three weeks.
What's going to cause this delay?
We're, we're still negotiating that. He's, he's asking for a little more than three weeks, but I think there's probably 11 days that are possibly warranted. He's claiming that some of it is due to on power, not in the lines of time, but that really isn't valid at that point.
That's expected.
But there's a lot of work to be done out there. There's some work under the original part of that that they could have been working on, but they weren't. So, we're working through that, we're not prepared to bring that to the board right now. We did get a letter this week, and the end of last week, and we did respond, and we will take it under advisement and talk to them next week about what we do at this point. There's several days that they could have worked, that it wasn't raining and they didn't, so all of that comes in. You know, Saturdays and Sundays, it is 90 days, calendar days. So, the days that it rains, you make it up elsewhere, as you want.
My, my recollection of the meeting was that Saturday was the one that they were working.
He worked last Saturday. So, we gave them notification late Thursday, he was unable to get organized for Friday, he tried to get the doctors, get them there, but I guess they were on a project or something, so. So, he came out Saturday, sorry. Okay, over to Eastwood. Mason's finally finished up on Monday on the north part of the two-story addition. They cleaned up, washed down, they're out of there. Now, that's opened some stuff up, finishing, finish up some of the site stuff. Remaining site concrete we have right now, they poured stairs coming out of the new addition yesterday. There's a small section of sidewalk near that parking lot that needs finished up, they're getting that formed up. They poured the stoop coming out of the stairwell, the two-story addition today, and they have a small sidewalk there, so. There's not a lot of site concrete left within, probably by the end of this week, most of that will be done, which will allow them to get the landscape, or get the topsoil place, get the landscaper in there, start really dressing it up and making it look Paving, they're prepping right now, they prep today, tomorrow, getting the parking lot ready, going to get it cleaned off, wash it off, get tack coat down, as well as the loop at the other addition, the two-story addition, which is the children drop-off loop. That's going to probably be paved on Thursday, that's the plan as of right now, weather dependent. Like I said, topsoil landscaping probably next week, really make it start to look nice. On the pre-K side, the flooring is in, in both classrooms. The hallways were being prepped today, the only ones expected to go down tomorrow or Thursday, in that, in the corridor, complete all the flooring in that addition. Painting is pretty much complete down there, with the exception of some of the door frames, window frames, maybe a second coat here or there, but it's, it's mostly complete. And then the ceilings, grids in, the lights are in, everything's in, except the ceiling tile, which is expected to arrive on Thursday. Soon as it comes in, they'll drop it in. All the cuts are already in place, so it would literally take them an hour to get those ceilings finished. Some bad news that we received today, the casework, which we've been talking to them about for months, literally trying to make sure that they were on schedule with that. We were told it was going to arrive Monday, they told us today, they screwed up, there was some miscommunication, now it's being pushed back two weeks. So, immediately I called them, trying to find out when the, at least the furniture was coming, so that we can get these teachers to get some stuff moved in. He's working on that, couldn't give me an answer, which two weeks ago was a little beatery, so. Regardless, the classrooms will be ready, other than we won't have casework and furniture in them, so we can give them some area, it's just not going to be, they're not going to be able to put stuff away for right now, which is unfortunate, that's, that's not what we were hoping for. Over on the two-story side, flooring again, was the last classroom was being finished today with VCT. They're already prepping the corridors, and then as far as the stairwell, there's still some additional work they have to do to the, the steel in there has some rust still on it. We told them off of painting to try and make sure that it was prepped correctly. Ms. Shriver actually had the Sherwin-Interf come out today, and he took a look at it with me and told them, you know, they still need to do some additional work to get that rust removed. So, they'll be taking care of that tomorrow, paint the structure after that, and then that will allow them to paint the, the walls, and then the stair treads and everything that will go on after that. So, a few days, within three, four days, the stair will look a lot different, it will be nearly complete as well. Ceilings, the only ceilings that are left right now, ceilings in the classrooms are all completed, tiles installed, corridors, grid was being installed today, and as soon as that's finished, probably within the next day or so, the tile will be set in place for those. And then as far as electrical, mechanical, data, the electrical contractor, he's in good shape, he's got pretty much everything installed, his devices are installed, he's already trimmed out most of it, he's working on some installation of site lighting today, getting the last few poles in, they're in really good shape. Mechanical contractor was putting in some of the piping connecting the heat pumps within the last couple of days, they're in pretty good shape as well, we're, we're getting those units started up here soon. And then plumbing, there's not a lot of plumbing. Once we get the casework installed, then the rest of the plumbing can be installed, the sinks that go into the casework and the rubbers for that. Data, the county's been installing data. The two-story addition has pretty much everything pulled in, almost everything terminated. The pre-K side, they ran into an issue with some testing that's going in the school, they weren't able to get into some of the spaces to pull some of that cable, so I think Thursday is the planned date for that right now, but it should only take them probably two days to finish up those two rooms as well. And then the fire chief was out today, we took him around, make sure he was okay with everything, asked him if he was okay with allowing the teachers to get into those areas. He was fine with that, said really no documentation is needed, as long as we're not bringing students in. He was completely fine with allowing the teachers to come in and out, as the contractor allows them, so that they're safe. So, they, at this point, now they can get into those classrooms, the initial.
Board Members, if I may, let me digress with Mrs. Hines here. Obviously, we're working on a groundbreaking ceremony for Suncrest Elementary. I'd like for her and/or Judy and/or Beth to kind of give the board an update as to where we are with that, and reinforce the date, newspapers here, and while we're being taped and audited, so everybody can understand where it is. So, please, Mrs. Hines, I apologize for skipping over here, but I wanted to give you that.
No problem at all. First of all, I'd love to thank Judy and Beth, they have just been.
I think we need you up by the mic, please.
Oh, of course. Judy and Beth have just been integral in, you know, making sure that this is all happening. We're kind of on the aesthetic side of it, Judy just makes everything flow so smoothly, so thank you so much to Judy and to Beth, both of them are phenomenal. At this time, the groundbreaking is scheduled for Wednesday, May 27 at 11 o'clock a.m., and Judy is in the process of making sure that all the invitations get issued to all of those folks. We have, I've given her some, the LSIC member names, the PTG officer names, she's contacted the Suncrest Neighborhood Association, so we're trying to get as many folks as we can there at the groundbreaking. We had originally talked about all of our students coming, but we thought perhaps it might be 90 degrees and, you know, little bodies. So, what we're going to do is have representatives from every single classroom there at the groundbreaking, and we're just going to kind of do that by, you know, picking names out of hats. The children are very excited about the prospect of the new school. I cannot tell you how supportive the community has been, and obviously, thanks so much to the board and to Dr. Demona, Ms. Tellerica, and Ms. Maddon for all of your support. It's going to be phenomenal, I mean, we have worked, we're working to get a group there from Morgantown High to do some, you know, some musical things for us, and because we ourselves don't have a choir, we don't have a band, so it's going to be great. We thought we, since we're feeder at Morgantown High School, they would be willing to do that for us. And it's going to, our PTG is supplying all of the snacks and things, and Beth has organized all of the tables and the chairs, and I think at this point it remains to see whether it's going to rain or it's going to be sunny, but either one, we will have a big tent over our heads, so it's going to be really exciting. And once again, thank you to both, you know, Judy's just phenomenal and all of her organization, as is Beth, so.
Is our mascot going to be there as well?
The Suncrest star? Well, not yet, we're, we're working on that.
Well, they check with the parties, maybe they have.
And listen, Dr. Demona, that's really what he's going to look like, similar, very similar to that. He's going to be, we're working on a costume right now, we're working on, on getting a costume, and he's going to have a big smile, and we want like constellations all over them, and we've, we've really worked hard on the, the building itself being so much a part of the differentiation process that we're, that we're doing, and, you know, the faculty's been involved in that, the staff's been involved in that, you know, we've had a lot of folks involved in that, we've. We've, a lot of it focuses on our STEM lab, which now has become a stream lab, science, technology, reading, engineering, the arts, and math, and that is a recognized, you know, type of, and the way that we designed it. I guess I could go on forever, so I better sit down.
Mrs. Hines and a few of her teachers went to a STEM conference-
Correct.
And we, knowing, we've been working with Ted, obviously our architect, to be able to design a, I guess, a multi-purpose area that would incorporate our library, so to speak, our visual area, a STEM room, as well as connectivity between all those rooms for certain, for tables and layout of the building itself. And so Joanne came back, and I'm the speaker we have for you, obviously, came back and said, for not really knowing a whole lot, you're really right where we need to be in relationship to that.
Absolutely.
So that's nice to know, so.
That's great, and we can talk to the university STEM folks and, you know, Chris Urban had worked with us, and, you know, Ted is just so willing to, you know, look at and adapt to many of the inexpensive changes that-
[laughing]
That's well said. But it is going to be-
Expenses is always relative, now, April.
I know, that's true. I'm glad you said that. But no, we're very excited about it, and Judy, I'm sure you maybe have a few other things to say, Beth, but thank you so much, we're excited about it. The date card went out today, so.
We're writing our legislators, we're writing those that are involved in that. SBA is sending up a representative as well. Hopefully, the executive directors, or executive director will be able to contact, I'm sure our representative. They notified the governor's office, will they ever anything officially yet for that?
The committee commission will not be able to attend because their meeting is on Wednesday next, and I certainly have access to our canopy if they wanted to, and convene afterwards, but they can find that off.
Even though this is a lot of-
Yes, they are unable to attend.
Should we just stay?
We've invited the state board superintendent as well, yes. And have we invited any state, the State Wood president?
No, invited all of them.
Okay. And we invited Teresa, superintendent in this area. Waited for a hundred people, I think.
How many?
We're members, if I could just skip the agenda and ask for an update on the Westwood Athletic Facility if you can, because I know the other one will obviously need to be discussed a little bit more, so, if you'd be in the place.
As many of you know, Mr. Lidle brought it to our attention, there was some issues with the shingles on the sessions locker room building. Some shingles had either blown off or not been installed or whatever, but we have notified the contractor, they have been back on site and have fixed that. In fact, they were wanting to be here to light and speak, but obviously they're not here, they did ask for, and talking to the board. So I think that's why it's on the agenda tonight. There was also some discussion about the backflow preventer, and what we have found is that there are actually two backflow preventers, there was some issues as to why it was outside, and both contracts of the building as well as the irrigation, there's actually two backflow there, so you're not contacting. So then there's some punchless items that I think Ken Holsoft in our office put together back in November, working with field term to get some of those issues resolved, and then there's some, some work on the track itself, it used to be like, but we're on top of that, that contractor is not getting paid out, so we still have to focus on that contractor to take care of that.
Did we replace shooting also, or was it just shingle river?
They put a ridge in, and shingled over it.
They didn't fix any of the shingles, or they added no plywood? I'm not sure if you know what I'm saying, I mean.
Well, I think we need to check that, because it's unacceptable the way it's built. Add plywood to, to the ridge, the ridge is short on plywood, and the shingles are concave, and they're creating a harm on top of there. I'm 100% sure that's the case, or it was the case, unless they tore that off, or you did the whole thing. And I don't think we're just going to let this go because of the rock that's building up. I'll get with them and ask, I did meet with Mr. Hines after, and he did verify that they were there, and he did have the standard one open, yeah.
Brian, can you go and get an inspection, a site inspection on that place?
Absolutely, yeah, we knew they were there, it's just they never really contacted us and said we couldn't work, so.
Well, we hope, it was like, why they were just going to be here tonight, because if you ask them, kind of, it's good, we told them what time and how you run, what, I think.
All right, let's go and move to the next item of the board members, please, the MHS press box, and some options that we're looking at. Mr. Sanders, you might get in the light, please.
These slides here, and there are 14 of them, and it's based upon what was presented back in April and then updated a few days later. But essentially, what we have is three options. The original option on the visitor's side, option number two and three are both on the home side. Option number two takes the press box and centers it on the field as it is in option one on the visitor's side. Option number three actually slides it towards the facilities building, off-center, and the reason behind that is to minimize how many windows in the classroom are hindered by, by the press box itself. So this is the overall view, visitors' bleachers, you can barely see the diagrams there, but the next slides will show that, but this slide pertains to all three options. So at the top, that's the visitor showing the configuration, and then at the bottom is the home side showing that configuration. So option number one, I put in a series of information there discussing pros and pawns, so to speak, that there's a control room, a visitors' coach, two press rooms, a restroom, a radio, and a VIP room. This assumes that the home coaches are still in the existing high school building, as they are now, so there is not a home coaches booth in option one. It's an 80, an 80-foot long press box or wide, and it's 26 feet, eight inches high off of the field surface. It's at that elevation to get the proper sidelines for now, but also for the future, whenever those grandstands are in place, the idea is those grandstands will be raised just like the homes ones are, so that you have that spectator on the front row who can be able to see over the team and the coaches. So once that's higher, the sightlines become a little bit more difficult. Under this scenario, I'll go to that, that view there is where it's being located, it does have a film deck on top that's 40 feet by 14. Exiting off of this will both go to the visitors' bleachers, as well as all of that yellow on the back or the top of the screen is actually a ramp. So as you exit the press box anywhere on there, you would go to the left, ramp down, turn, and ramp down, and then the X in the corner is actually a lift, and that lift will take you down 12 feet to get to the sidewalk. You also have the option at that point to go down the steps and get down to that sidewalk. Under this option, we would have to remove the existing press box, or there would be a light pole that would be relocated. As you may know, the light pole was actually in the line of sight to the scoreboard, and then a fiber optic line that was tipper, tipper apparently located last time would have to be, would be relocated under the scope. The future weight room would be constructed behind that area, or it couldn't be off to the side, and access for construction would come from that existing parking lot, and part of that parking lot would be used for construction activities. The next slide, and stop me in time if you have any questions, actually shows in the dark, stands is where the stands are now, the lighter stands is where the future stands would be. So you can see that what we've accommodated is somebody standing on that upper level cross walkway, that they are not blocking the view from the press box. The dotted line shows the line of sight from someone standing in the press box, looking to the sideline of the field. So that's how we arrived at that 26 feet, eight inches high above the field surface. This is a view that we've put together indicating what the press box would look like. As you may recall, when the project was originally bid out a few months ago, it was a masonry structure. It went all the way to the ground, it had a restroom and elevator contained within it, and this approach is very similar to what is at University High School, where it's on structural steel, and then it's a pre-manufactured unit set on that frame. In our, in our proposal, we do have a cost in there, we put in what we call thin brick, it's still a masonry product, but it's only about 3/8 of an inch thick, and it's still grounded in, so aesthetically, it still looks like brick. We would put that on both sides, the back, and then the lower section below the windows. Option two moves to the other side of the field. And this is the arrangement where the press box is centered, over top of the existing structure. You can see the seats underneath of there, and the seats to the left and to the right are where the wheelchair ADA seat is contained. And what we've done with this, as I said, we've centered it on the field. We also, in this scenario, we have included the home coaches into this press box. So this press box instead of 80 feet becomes 96 feet, and the reason behind that is, is that the press box is actually going to block the line of sight out of the third-story windows to the field. So this is centered there, the red areas that you see is kind of a pattern are the actual seats that are going to be displaced by the steel columns that need to be put in place to support the structure. There's 33 seats that will be lost based upon putting the press box in this location. The, as far as other things in this option, the existing press box can remain, so it does not need to come out. The light pole does not have to be relocated. The scoreboard is actually a little bit more visible from this side than the other side. And the weight room can pretty much be placed wherever it wants on the visitor's side because you have that whole area to, to work with.
Yeah, wait, so you're saying there will be seats under this?
There will be seats under this.
And all the red dots will be columns posted?
Right.
How's the visibility going to be, as if you're looking down, you're going to have posts down that way, so it will waste them?
There will be some loss, and obviously, if you're sitting all the way to the back, there may be more than one column that's going to break your view because of how they're arranged. If you're closer to the front of that area, then they're going to be less in your way, although it's going to be closer to you, so you actually may lose more visibility. So that's one of the options, and what we've done is designed the lower level or the underside of this press box high enough so that if a spectator is on the top row standing, that they still can't touch or jump and grab a hold of the press box, so it has to be high enough to stop somebody from going there. This is the configuration that would be above the seats, what it would look like. As you can see, the X there where we have a left and a stair, and then this is the sightlines. If I go back one, you can see, and you may recall on the building, on the very top, where the high school actually has a projection on one end, and then it recesses. So here, there's actually two views that I'm going to share with you. The right-hand side is actually where the school is the closest to the press box. We have to maintain that walkway that's currently there, and we're elevating that again so that it's not being in the way of any spect-type spectator, and then you can see the person that would be in the press box of the high school, how their view is being blocked by the press box itself, and if somebody's on the film deck, it's being obviously blocked even more. So that's why in this option, the home coaches have to be in the new press box. Does that make sense? The next view is in the recess of the school, so the, and I don't know where the home coaches are, if they're in the projected part or if they're in the recess part, but if they're in the recess part, it's actually worse. That line of sight cuts through about half of that press box, so that's even more of a reason why the home coaches need to be in the press box in this option number two. And this is a view looking on the home side as to what that would look like. Again, structural steel columns with the pre-manufactured system installed there, and then the thin brick installed on that as well. Option number three is very similar to option number two, but what we've done is we've slid that to the right, we're closer to the parking lot or the facilities building, and what we've done here is removed seating, the bench seating underneath the press box, and put the ADA seat in there. Mr. Lidle brought this to our attention, is an option to actually lower the press box because you don't have to worry about somebody standing there and touching the press box. It's actually someone just walking through, or someone in a wheelchair on crutches. So we're basically moving the ADA seating to the center and moving the other bleachers to the outside of that, so that allows us to bring that height down. The other thing that we've done here is we've moved it to the facilities building so that it minimizes how many windows in the classroom building are being affected by the press box being in that location. So again, there's that view, the stair and the lift, and then this is the view showing that even though we've lowered the press box, that should help the sightlines, but with somebody in the upper level of the school building, their view is still being blocked by someone on the film deck. If no one's on the film deck, then their view is not blocked. That's in the location where the school was closest to the press box, and then the next view where they're in the recess area, the press box itself will be blocking that view. So the home coaches should be in the press box on the home side if that's what you would like to do. And then this is a view, very similar to option two, but it's actually a little bit lower, so it's not, not as tall. I believe it drops down about four feet, maybe four and a half feet from where option number two is, and then you can see the seating underneath has been removed, and that's where the ADA seating would be. And it's slid down closer to the facilities building. And I think that's it, unless you have questions. We sort of can develop option four if you'd like.
So Ted, how, what's the total seating of option, the home side option? What would still be the total seating capacity on that side?
I don't know that I have, have or recall how many seats are in the existing bleachers, but I can tell you that in option two, we're losing 33, and in option three, we're losing 21. But I seem to recall- But I seem to recall, I'm afraid to say, it's less than 3,000, but I don't recall exactly what the capacity was.
Because the majority of our seating on the visitor's side, people come from the bottom up, correct? And on this side, they come from the top down?
Correct.
Which is part of the difference in the whole scheme.
Right. And it's affecting the center of the stands, which are where most people are sat.
The prime seats.
Yeah.
And so the farthest edge of this option three is on which yard line? It starts at the 20, the 30?
Unfortunately, we don't have the field there.
Because I can't remember as far as.
Yeah, I'm thinking we said something like the 27 that day, but we may have pushed it even further because we wanted to line it up with the aisles that come down. Because if we didn't, then we were going to affect the exit capacity. So I think we've actually pushed it further than what we discussed that day. So we've gone beyond the high school building.
Because there's steps kind of across from that edge currently to that kind of parking, that other part in here. As you cost this out using a, if you will, prefab structure on top of the steel, are those generally much less expensive than what our original concept was?
Definitely.
Are you saying half or?
Could be, yeah.
I mean, I realize it's a bid process, so it's kind of ambiguous, but I really unfortunately don't know enough about construction to say, to know what the difference would be. Could be.
Yeah, because I think our original bid was just over a million dollars. And we're down to, depending on which option, around 600,000.
And again, these funds were raised by the group there. These are not?
Three different priorities, Hazel, Ruby, the boosters, and us. We have a third in each one of us.
And this was the same fundraising structure basically that we had at University High School?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want that to be clear, that this is not us putting more money into this structure than we did into the University High School structure.
You're correct.
The only reason we have these steel beams now is because instead of enclosing that and making that its own facility under there to save cost, we rolled that up and just put it on the steel structure.
Well, and actually, part of the original design did have some steel beams. The center section contained the elevator and the restroom and some storage area, and that tower, 70 feet, was an exterior. But outside of that, there were some steel beams, but it was hidden behind the visitors' bleacher structure.
So it was lowered?
So it was, and somewhat we had that case here, so those steel beams are somewhat behind that. And when those are replaced, it'll definitely be behind it because it's going to be higher.
Ted, go to option two or three, just a photo for me, please. Board members, there are two things I want you to consider. Number one, we have to decide if we want it on the home side or the visitor's side. I think it's going to be reflected on what we want to do in relationship to the structure of the field house. Number two is I want you to see the white. It really seems to stand out, and I think before we put it out to bid, it almost went that thinset brick to be able to encompass the entire building. I think aesthetically, if we go on the home side, it'll probably give a little bit of a look. Can't imagine it's going to be that much money to finish off that front part in relationship to that. Some advantages or disadvantages that we have. We haven't heard anything. We announced it a couple of meetings ago to see if there was any of the boosters groups or any issues in relationship with putting on the home side. We've not heard from anyone. To my knowledge, nobody's brought anything up to our office. That's number one. Number two is I think as we look at this, we need to also talk about to Hazel and Ruby. We haven't heard any feedback from them as well to see if they have any issues in relationship to be on the home side. The third issue is this, if we weren't this particular scenario on the home side, it would impact construction in relationship to our student population moving in and around the facility, as you all know, because they do go down to the field for phys ed and different kind of activities after hours. So we have to accommodate our student movement in relationship to even before or after school. We would still be able to broadcast ballgames because the broadcast would still come from the working press box on the opposite side, so we wouldn't lose anything. The negative part, by going to the visitor's side, you can work through the day in relationship to what's going on there because obviously it doesn't involve that many students other than those kids who might be going to the weight room. The negative also would be that if we tear or work into that visitor's side, we now lose the capability of the clock, we lose the capability of announcing ballgames, so we'd have to work accommodations out to get them to do that while that construction is being done. Because we wouldn't approve this tonight, probably look at it in a May or possibly a June meeting, I'm not sure we'd have the facility done in time for football or soccer season this coming fall. It would be really close to see how far into the season we would have before we have a working press box. This is not an easy decision, I know. The drawback aesthetically is what the board has to refer to. I don't know of any other school that has a press box on the visitor's side. I had the opportunity to talk to someone, and he said it would be nice to see the student head or face as they announce ballgames, as they announce homecoming, coming court, or different things that go on a field, who they can't see because they're announcing from the visitor's side as opposed to the home side. So I can sit here and give you pluses and minuses on either one. It really comes down, when we talked about more to the home side, with the monetary issues. If the money was available and the boosters had it, this wouldn't be an issue. We probably would have already approved the contract at about a million one, but because we need to reduce the scope of the work because of the funds not being raised enough, we entertain the idea of a press box on the home side with a little more cost effectiveness in relationship to the building of it here, but we also realize it would obstruct, as Mike put out, some of the view of the board. There would are members that would be sitting there watching the game, and it would also obstruct maybe the opportunity where we'd lose some seats as well. So we can go either way. Ackles Group obviously had an opinion, Ted had a recommendation, some of your board members have some strong opinions, so I'll certainly entertain whatever you all would like to have as we move forward on this particular project. But I would like to do something over the next month or so, or six weeks, and give this in direction from the board at home. Here's your seat with them.
Ted, I could add one other thing. We've been talking about home and visitors, and when this whole master plan started with phase one, it seems like forever ago, the visitor's side was planned to be the home side. There was going to be its own concession area down below with the weight room, where the existing, where the old locker rooms were, that was going to be a gathering area. And so that whole side was going to be, and probably had they had the funds, it would have already been that one. But I think once the new grandstands got placed here, it just became the home side. Now, will the boosters someday deem the other side the home side? I don't know. So that's a question that somebody might want to answer or consider.
Ted, how far, I'm a little bit concerned about the second floor window lighting, but still a pretty good distance away as far as the classroom lighting.
Right.
How far is that? I mean, it's cool with the sidewalks.
The sidewalk's about seven feet, I believe, and the offset is probably another six feet. So you're somewhere in the 13 to 14, 17 feet. If I could read that, it's dimensioned there, but I can't see it.
I guess what I'm asking is your opinion, that the lighting is 10 in the back of the left, the classroom, 17, right?
I guess like 17.
It says 10 in the back of the left. Okay, that's right, there's 10, so it looks like 17, something like that. That's a poor.
So the back to the middle is 10.
I do want to say too, I have received some contact, and I could actually got some things in writing from some people that actually currently work in the press box on the visitor's side that still would like to go with the original concept. And I can't think there's a lot of people who wouldn't like to go with the original concept, but of course, we're met with the financial realities.
Well, I think further discussion regarding what Ted brought up, which was the long-range plan to make that home side, is that still an expectation? I have no idea, because it does offer options that we would never have on the other side. My biggest concern at this point is that whatever we do now is going to be a long-lasting situation here. We have an old facility, landlocked, we don't have a lot of flexibility. It's a lovely building, it's a federal period style, it's worth preserving. And minimizing any visual incursions that don't really enhance that inside bothers me. It's an historic neighborhood, it's a historic building. So considering what the original plans were, considering what the future might be, further discussion in the financing, I mean, I understand why we need to relook at this, and I think Ron makes some good suggestions. It's just a matter of, let's look a little further into the future, make sure whatever we do now is not going to, it's going to laugh themselves silly when they look up and see the spaceship Enterprise floating above the deck there. So that's my concern.
You just touched, you just touched Sam Burnett's heart.
I agree with you 100%. Construction of the addition destroyed the aesthetic beauty.
May I ask one more question? If we would put a structure with this kind of decking underneath it, even on the visitor's side, is that something that eventually you could close in? So it's, it wouldn't mean it would have to, the option one would not have to look like that forever, possibly?
And like I said, you know, eventually, when those bleachers get replaced, you can see that the one section already gets fairly close to the bottom of it now, and when those get replaced, it actually goes higher.
Go back to the intent, please. So the board understands, look at the bottom row of those bleachers, anybody sitting there is obstructing view based on the students that are standing there waiting to play with the football teams. And so it's really ground level, and so that's what we have to raise, and so that would raise probably three feet, I would think, to get the seats up high enough for the viewers to be able to see.
Yeah, that's at ground level, but on this side, it's been raised about four and a half or five feet. So when they get replaced, they will move up. So you're effectively.
That makes sense.
And that's what's being shown here. I forgot I had a pointer. But this is the existing bleachers. And then when it gets replaced, it gets moved up to this elevation, and then that would be the top deck. So you can see there that all you're going to be seeing is that much from the field side.
And one of the original designs had all that closed in also.
Right.
And we had the elevator going up in between, but it was just too costly to be able to do all that based on available funds.
The bleachers would be what we have at University High currently, because those are raised up.
Correct. And what we have at MHS home side, the raised bleachers as well.
Yeah, it's the same as what these are right here. Those are raised up.
Because Clay Vettell's bleachers are awesome. So I mean, they would all be, well, Westwood, everything would be the same.
I mean, I think we all agree we need some changes and that we need it to work with the line of sight and where the people are going to be sitting and accommodate the legal requirements, but we need to think about what we're going to do now is it's going to be here for several decades, and if we can do phases one, two, and three, first we do this, and then later on you can close it in, and then there are rooms there for whatever purpose, and maybe even later add an elevator. I think that's what we have to make sure of. And I do think it's worth having a discussion whether people volunteer or not to come forward. I think we need to pull those people back into a meeting and talk about the changes, the adjustments we're going to have to make due to financing, and that would be the alumni group and the Hazel and Quine Foundation. And even the coaches perhaps from Florida County School talk about where they see the future too. So I'd just like to see us study this at that point.
Yeah, just like what Ron said too about working on a watch running. Because you've got to work around that, Mr. Quine.
Yes.
And that side, once it comes down, then you're playing with those issues. We just cleared that all up for you, didn't we?
Yes, we did. Now, one more on that, or your recommendations, if we're just going to start again. I know we're getting into the meeting pretty extensively. Thank you, Ted. Thank you. I would acknowledge Sam Burnett in front of the board members while we're here. We have a wellness meeting, as you all know, usually the first board meeting of each month. And Sam brought down several pieces of different kind of paraphernalia. This is a symbol, that was made by a 3D printer. And Mr. Burnett had several pieces in relationship to that.
I wonder what that's for?
Yeah, Star Trek. And so what's happening is Sam is starting a, you want to say briefly, Sam, a technology class that involves the arts with engineering to design.
Yeah, basically, what I'm going, starting out this year, we just have two 3D printers. I'm ending the year with my graphics class, who are actually designing in a CAD program, and we're going to print whatever it is that they have designed on the 3D printers that we have. And then next year, we've scheduled our engineering class with a couple of our art classes, and Mr. Gibson and I are going to be collaborating between the arts, and I guess you could say we'll put A in STEM. So we're going to overlap the arts with some of those engineering. So it's pretty exciting.
Absolutely. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Next thing I want to acknowledge, you have this one in front of you. This is the progression of testing in Montague County. You can see this is bay 19 of 36. So as you go down the chart, you can see how each one of our schools are doing in relationship to the testing. Our goal obviously is to get it all completed by the timeframe we're supposed to, but also make sure that we still maintain our participation rate, which is 95%, which is required obviously by the waitlist submitted to the federal government. So I just want you to be aware of that, what I'm looking for.
I think this is a really good number. I think we're doing really well with this.
We're doing quite well. And you see some low percentages there. It's not because they're not testing, it's just some have not opted to test until now instead of getting ready to start.
So we haven't had any issues with parents deciding off now with the testing?
Yes, sir. And without further ado, on bay of breath, waiting patiently in the wings.
Oh, Terry.
It's Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Hawkins obviously is our chief financial officer, and Terry's going to present to you our budget for 2015 to 2016. And he won't paint a doom and gloom, but he'll certainly paint a picture that maybe we've got to be careful with issues budget as we move forward.
Thanks, Ted. Tonight, we will take a look at our preliminary budget and ask the board to approve it. Each county board must prepare a proposed budget with succeeding fiscal year, which funded attempts to maintain, and submit it to the state board for their approval. County boards must throw a public hearing prior to submitting it to the state board. And proposed budget must be made available for public review at least 10 days prior to hearing, and must be published as a class two legal item. Our budget will be published on Thursday. And the first budget will be operated with our general operating fund, that's our general current expense fund, and that's where we account for all the revenues and expenditures other than those that are required to be accounted for in a separate fund. Our proposed revenue for next year consists of taxes, property taxes. You can see that $57,892,000 in projected taxes. Of that, the regular levy is projected to bring in $30,033,000. The excess levy will be... The excess levy will be $27,892,000. We have local sources of approximately $2,501,000. And that is made up of tuition, approximately $15,000. Interest earned on our bank accounts, about $200,000. The pallet money is about $1,736,000. And miscellaneous non-recurring revenue, about $100,000. Our state sources are projected to be $46,312,000. Of that, basic state aid is $33,749,000. PIA allocation for the employees' health benefits, state aid, $173,000. And our retirement allocation for basic retirement is $44,389,000. We're projecting our Medicaid billings to only be around $500,000 next year. And our estimated beginning balance is $300,000. The total budget of $107,106,620. And there's a pie chart kind of gives you a, okay, Nancy.
The Medicaid billings, I know that it's been quite an issue. How did we do this past year? Because I know there was controversial in some ways.
I think we're projected to be a little over $500,000 for this year.
And so we don't, aren't worried about?
That's a loss of about $250,000. We projected $750,000.
We have a budget for this year, $750,000. Looks like we're beating around $560,000, something like that. Depends on what our total billings are at the end of the year. That's down considerably from years ago when it was being
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, so from what you're hearing, they, it should have stabilized at about this level?
Yes, we think it will, we hope so.
They're continuing to make changes on it, which really frightens us. So it's a federal government issue. It's right now, it's still moving, they're still making some interpretations with what can and cannot be claimed. And that's the difficult part. Everybody knows now the term of random moment in time. And that's basically, they literally call and find out maybe access of student aid or aid, whatever. They change the bus aids and what they can and cannot claim. So that's in part the reason why we've lost some of that money. But I continue to watch that closely because we're worried about any other changes to federal government forward.
Because we're still providing the services, isn't it?
Absolutely.
I mean, we're not, no service has been cut back.
That's correct.
It's just, we just can't bill for it.
That's correct.
And there's a pie chart showing, you can see that the bulk of our funds come from basic state aid and PIA retirement is kind of state aid too. And then our real first property regular levy taxes is part of the state aid formula.
Whatever, please note, our excess levy is at 26% now of our budget. There for a while, we were thinking maybe a fourth or a little less or whatever. So it's starting to creep up there a little bit, about the fourth of our full budget. And it's at 74% once again, not the 75 that we started on a couple of years ago, we did reduce it.
Proposed expenditures, and this is by the main function category. You can see the instruction, proposed expenditures are $60,937,000. That's about 57%. The support services for our students are about $60,400,000. Instructional staff, one day is almost, one day is seven. Central administration, $1.5 million. School administration, 5.6. Central services is almost 1.8. The next biggest category is operating and maintaining our facilities, which is $12.9 million. About 12% of our budget goes to that category. Student transportation, $8.5 million. Community services, $1.185 million. We have some debt we pay off for as far as our QZABs and lease purchase agreement we have for university high school, $991,000 every year. We transfer $4.81 million to the other funds. Now, $3.5 million of that is support for the cook salaries, it comes in as a state aid formula. We transfer it over to the child nutrition program. And over $600,000 would be our growth money, which we transfer to permanent improvement fund for the rest facilities. And that's down considerably from last year, $1.3 million. And then we have in reserve, $1.2 million, $990,000 is in the regular county fund and $216,000 is part of the Medicaid, which we set aside as a reserve.
It's kind of interesting, our facilities, 12% of our budget. We put 12% of the total county population under roof on the other bases.
And this is what's included in those categories. You can see instruction includes all activities related to instruction, which includes salaries, supplies, textbooks, services. The support services for students includes attendance, department, social work, guidance, health services, psychologists, speech, professional physical therapy, and any other people's services. The instructional staff category includes anything related to professional instruction services, the library, professional staff development, technology. The central administration includes the board expenses, superintendent's office, assistant superintendent's office, audit, legal services, community relations, liability insurance, and any public official ones. School administration category includes everything related to the principal's office in the school. Central services includes the business office, printing and publishing, human resources, service staff development, our employee assistance program. The operation and maintenance includes our maintenance department, custodial staff, property insurance, health code, natural gas, safety, garbage disposal, and rental of buildings. Student transportation includes all the bus drivers, mechanics, fuel, parts, and vehicle insurance. Community services are contribution to 4A, public library allocation, plus our pre-K and labyrinthous services, close to $900,000.
About $970,000 insurance.
The debt service forces, repaying the QZAB and lease purchase agreement. And then transfers include the money we transferred to the permanent improvement for the growth county facilities and the child nutrition program. And reserves, which is set aside for any contingencies. And there's pie chart showing kind of what that looks like. My touch of this.
So it used to be about 88% of our budget was actually in people, employees. So what would you say now because?
That'll be coming on the next
That comes on the next one?
This next one is broken down by what we call the option code. That's a little more specific to what you were asking, Nancy, that salaries are $63.5 million, which is 60% of our budget. Employee benefits and fixed costs are $19,900,000, which is 18.61. And so that's about 78% plus, cook salaries are included in the transfers. So I'd say it's probably around 3%. So we're looking about 81 or 82% for salaries. Professional technical services, $2.2 million. Purchased property, $1.4 million. Other purchase services, $3.3 million. Supplies, $9,179,000. Equipment, $836,000. Other, it's $2.3 million. And of course transfers for me, $181,000. Again, the total, $1,706,620. Salaries include all salaries, professional service, substitutes. Benefits would be the national social security, retirement, what was called, health, life insurance premiums, living optical insurance, and our long-term disability insurance. Professional and technical services would include any professional educator services that are contracted, staff development, other professional services such as legal services, auditing, architects, and technical services. Purchased property services include water, storage, garbage disposal, snow removal, repair services, and rentals. Other property purchased, other purchase services include food, transportation, property liability insurance premiums, post-each-telephone hearing, legal ads, printing, travel. Supplies would include instructional supplies, custodial supplies, maintenance, natural gas, factory food, books, pre-articles, software, and fuel. Equipment, of course, that's pretty self-explanatory, vehicles, furniture, machinery, technology-related hardware. Other includes dues, fire fees, debt service, and reserves. And of course, transfer from the child nutrition and rest facilities act. And there's pie chart kind of showing that you can see that salaries and fixed employees' benefits are the bulk of our It has an increase from this year's budget of $807,430. Very small increase, it's only 0.76% increase in our budget from this year to next year.
We did have a larger, let the board know about the local share raising, but also
Our local share did increase. However, that's offset, that offset your state aids. Actually, the state aid actually went down about $800,000 from what we got this year and what we're going to get next year. And our regular levy taxes went up, up to the state's mouth, offset that. And of course, we lost money on our bus replacement, about $170,000. And we reduced the budget for Medicaid, so that's a time warp. Special revenue fund is where we account for all our grants or any money that's legally restricted for specific purposes. And it also includes our child nutrition program. Projected revenue for next year, the special revenue is either $1,712,000 from local sources, state sources, $5 million, federal sources, $948,000. And then transfer from the child nutrition program, $3,509,000. So our projected beginning special revenue fund revenue is $20,074,300. All of it comes from the federal and state grants that we get. And by function code, you can see instruction-related expenditures are 47% of that, $9.4 million. The support services for students, $363,000. Instructional staff, $146,2 million. Central services, $172,000. And the school administration, $1,000. Central services, $76,000. Operation maintenance plan, $71,000. Transportation, $773,000. Food service, $71,429,000. Community services, $39,483,980. Transfers, $170,220. See, the bulk of the money goes towards instruction. Salaries could be $9,840,000, 45%. Food benefits, $2.7 million. Professional and technical services, $432,000. Purchased properties, $40,000. Other purchase services, $227,000. Supplies, primarily food, built for child nutrition program, almost $5.8 million. Equipment, $1.4 million. Other, $101,000. And transfer, $170,000. See, salaries and supplies, employee benefits, we got the bulk of our expenditures. These are all restricted by the granting agencies on what can be spent for and how, whatnot. They have to prove their budgets before we can put in our budget. We also have the debt service fund, which is used to account for taxes that are levied and used to pay off principal interest on a long-term debt. Taxes, $3.2 million. Part of the pallet money dedicated to that is going to be approximately $98,000. We estimate the beginning balance, $100,000, so $3,399,000. And of that, there's $1,510,000 in bonds due and payable next year and interest of $1,889,000. $3,399,000. Our bond construction fund is where we account for the proceeds from issuing the bonds. Our bond fund's almost gone. We have $13,440 that is being retained because of, I think that's two separate POs for furniture at high school. And we need to resolve that issue within that budget exactly. We have to pay it, they have to break it all and proper information. That'll close out the bond. Those are capital expenditures. Urban improvement fund is where we account for capital or food miss, mobility, and other improvement projects. That's where we account for all our construction projects we have ongoing. We estimate our beginning balance to be $8.6 million. That's money we've set aside for primarily, the bulk of that is for the Suncrest Elementary project. And the transfer in, $671,000 from Rose County. So we have a total of many pleasures, $9,871,500 next year. That'll all go towards capital projects. Any questions so far?
So if the legislation had been successful, that would have removed funding, we wouldn't have lost this 671?
Right.
We'd have lost the 671 and we'd have lost, what, 1.1 from the pilot?
1.7.
1.7, all that from the pilot, so?
Well, we'd only lost half of it, what's half of it? Breaking about the, what's with the wind, it's way forward of it. So we've lost about $800,000.
So we lost $800,000 of that, 671 of this. So we would have had to, you would have had to translate that into additional cuts, be it, well, personnel's are highest overhead amount. Or related services. So we'll have to keep in mind, our mind, our eye on that to, as we move forward next year, to that possibility.
Watch everything as part of legislative management. And finally, these are our critical success factors, the goals that we have every year. Keep our staffing down much of the time over the state funding limits. And basically, right now, we are, I think, right where we always wanted to. There's 70 total clean service professional over what the state funds. And that was our goal, to get it at 70. So we're right where we want to be as far as
And how do we point that financially, what's one FTE for?
The average cost of our professionals around $65,000, $66,000. That includes the average, and all the benefits and for services, around $48,000. We also like minimizing the mandates. We don't have as many of those as we used to have. The state is implementing full daycare and all that kind of stuff. But we keep an eye for the, out for those. Try to minimize our spending growth. Watch what we're buying, how to place the
This table.
We ask everybody to think about the total school system, think globally, and not think about their own department or their own school, especially with the allocations. We don't like the use it or lose it mentality. Of course, we're going to reuse that money in other areas to follow you. And we like to keep our adjusted line item spending to a minimum. You know, even your total budget, your department may have a total. They have a deficit in one line item and not realize it. Spend the money in another line item that you need in the transfer of government. And one of the main things we've done since I've been here is we're very conservative in budgeting. We do not rely on carryover to balance our budget. It's always better to have a larger carryover than you anticipated, you can supplement that into your budget. You can supplement that into your budget, using various, and that's usually in September, October. And it's a lot harder to cut out money from your budget that already passed, if your carryover comes in lower than anticipated. So, we've been very conservative in budgeting our carryover, as we're getting balanced. That concludes my presentation. I would ask the board to approve the budget, and it will be published, the summary will be published in the paper on Thursday. There'll be copies of the detailed budget, which is a hundred and four pages long, in the libraries Thursday. Be a copy available for anybody to review in superintendent's office. And it will be posted on our webpage in this presentation. It will be posted on our webpage on Thursday.
Yep, especially like your visuals. All right. Do I have a motion to approve two thousand and fifteen sixteen?
So may.
Do I have a second? All right. Discussion. Questions?
Could you go through that again?
Yeah, yeah. I know that you'd like to hear it.
Carrie, I'm tired of you.
Everybody, okay, because we got this in advance. Everybody had a chance to look at it, even wanted to look at every line item, which I just love you presenting that part of it. So, all in favor of the budget as presented, the proposed budget as presented, for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise? Motion carries.
Board members, I'd like for you to accept the consent agenda as presented, please.
Okay, any motion?
No.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to comment, I don't, the new order minute format, I, so that's what all our minutes will look like from here on out before docs. Because I, I do like that.
Okay. No further discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise? Motion carries? Discussion and or other super?
Board members, on Monday, this coming Monday, which is the eighteenth, I believe, we have our court hearing scheduled in relationship to our interventionist. The ability to be able to hire those that we have each and every year, so hopefully that will come before the court this coming Monday, so that both sides can present some additional requests that were made by the judge prior to acting on that. So, right now, it's scheduled, I believe, for one-thirty. And so, any of the board members can attend, but they have the objection judge's office, please. Suncrest Elementary groundbreaking, you've heard the date basically established, and the activities that are so on, presented by Mrs. Hines. Hopefully, we, your schedules will free to be able to attend that as well. Once again, that is at eleven AM, and that is a request of the SBA, so they can have someone come up that particular day. So, please, if you can all make that. The retirement dinner, as you know, is scheduled on five-nineteen, which is next Tuesday, a week from tonight. Hopefully, all five board members will be able to attend that as well, with any significant others that they have, which you would like to bring. But right now, talking to that, we have eighty-one people that have signed up, which would be our retirees, some of our administrators, and a guest of the retirees. So, once again, it's very nice, we're going to present pins as well, as we've done before. And so, we've asked any board members in attendance to accompany me up, up front, so that we can call her name and have them come up, present the kinds of gifts that we would like to do that. And Madam Walker, you've always been such an excellent job of reading the names of the other people that are there. Next item that we have on the, on the discussion and or others, our graduations for next year. Mrs. Madder was trying to get things solidified for next year's graduation. It'll be on Memorial Weekend, and so she was really out in front of everything, only to find out that we heard back from the personnel at the Coliseum, that basically says, as soon as WVU completes their graduation, they're expecting much-needed renovations there. So, that is not available to us next year for our graduations. Now, what we've done by going there, it allowed us to be able to invite anyone who wanted to come, excuse me, there was no limit to the number of people that could attend. We had adequate parking, to say the least. Everything was very conducive in relationship to that, to both NHS as well as UHS. This sincerely hampered us. We've looked at a possible three or four different locations. Mile Park Event Center is available. They've told us that they would be more than willing to accommodate us. We'd have to be able to rent some chairs, close to four thousand, to be able to sit those chairs up for all our people that could attend. Talking to some of our high school principals, we probably would have to limit to about six per family, maybe a few more here or there, in order to be able to do that, plus everybody would be on the first floor, or on that main floor, because we don't have any rise to the elevation there. So, we checked on Chestnut Ridge, our Chestnut Ridge Church, that can accommodate about two thousand, I believe, Becky. And there was a third site that we looked at, was at the waterfront, I think, was the first.
Waterfront was twenty-five hundred, I believe.
Almost twenty-one.
The creative arts center isn't nearly large enough, at fourteen hundred. I think that man was checking with the feast or center, but I don't know that you've been able to confirm it to be at this point.
Roughly making, the capacity of the, the gem, the feast or center was four thousand, but that does not accommodate all seating. I think there's about twenty-eight hundred in the bleachers seating. They can probably do maybe another five hundred or so on the gem floor, and then the rest would be standing.
And the downside on the feast, and the, on the feast or centers out of camp, then?
And it's very, very uncomfortable and warm. I have been to two graduations there, and...
So, suggestions from the board here? Now, I want for any of you thought you might have another suggestion?
Well, at a Hazel Rook and McQueen, I think they accommodated forty-five hundred for the, the raffle for the children's hospital, whatever that thing, I don't know what the actual name. And they seem to think they could, they could get up to the five thousand if we wanted to, but is that going to be, I can't think of anywhere else that's going to be, have the parking, or the, and I realize there's only a two-lane road there and a two-lane road back, but to me, that seemed like the best solution at this, and it's air-conditioned.
Sure, the way we looked at it is all our graduates would sit in the center, and then everybody else would be on the sides. The other issue that we would have with that is we would not be able to go in and change it. Morgantown High has everybody in one location. UHS had two sections with the center out. We would not be able to accommodate any change in there, so our high schools would have to adjust to that. But we can certainly look at that in more detail if you'd like. Do you have that date reserved as of now?
Previously, I know we did the outside graduation when they were renovating the Coliseum before, but that is so weather-dependent. And as we know, when university high school was newly built, there was a huge traffic bottleneck issue trying to have it on that site. So, because the, we used Mountier Field the year of the Coliseum asbestos removal abatement. And that worked well, but it was also extremely hot on the field, and there was, they had water everywhere, and it was a big, it was a really big issue. And then, of course, there was the rain threat that was very...
Yeah, we had thought of, on the football field.
Yeah.
Well, we talked about it, and that really didn't get us any better than having it in the individual high schools on their own fields, because you want weather-dependent, and you're forced to really plan to...
It had unlimited seating, was the only advantage, was the unlimited seating, Mountier Field. And it, it, it worked, but we were just really lucky. We were just lucky.
Excuse me, ma'am? I have a suggestion. The Live Fairness Ball Field seats between thirty-two hundred and thirty-five, hundred and fifty.
Oh, but that's still, I mean, that's to make outside issue. It is the issue. And then we need, they said we needed, what, ideally five thousand seating for five thousand?
Well, if it's just been about three hundred graduates, and you're looking at ten person, family members attending, then you're talking about three thousand people in attendance. And so, we have some family members that, you know, bring several, and you have some that maybe just bring the immediate family.
Twenty-five.
Okay, we'll continue, look, I hadn't thought about flying there. Thank you.
I would just say, I think you probably should try to focus on indoors. I would have them outdoors to get...
The next item we have for you are our June board meetings, please. June ninth, I won't be able to attend that. I would like, if you still want to hold on to that June ninth board meeting, then we'd have Mr....
We have a short one.
We'd have Mr. Hawkins to oversee that meeting, if you're okay with that. June twenty-third is our other regular meeting that month. None of the, myself or the assistants will be at a conference that time. Carrie can do that one as well, if you'd like, or we can move that to another date. And we do want to have a meeting on June twenty-ninth, and that will, it's just a financial meeting, we're paying the outstanding bills that we started to do before the end of the month. And so, we'd like to have that one scheduled. That, that would be at twelve, which is what you normally have. And then, Madam Walker, sometimes, or Board Member Kelly, that may create issues for both of you too.
We can call it, if you can.
Can two lines call it?
We'll practice on it. I'm thinking, yes, it can, but we'll try it out beforehand to make sure.
Well, even if we use one cell and one, that thing, and another little, if you do go...
So, the only thing we need to decide, if you want to still maintain the June ninth meeting, and June twenty-third, we probably, Carrie and I talked briefly, if we change that, probably should go the week before, which would be June sixteenth, if you're looking at that. And that would then allow us to kind of pay any bills, or have any other special things that come up. I would always like to have personnel when we can, because, you know, we have a limited time on when we can move our people over the summer. We told the principals, Mr. Sanus and Mr. Williams did, that we've only got like six meetings left to be able to move any personnel members at all. So, so the pleasure of the board, you want to keep the night?
It's the ninth and sixteenth.
Ninth and sixteenth, you're okay with that, then?
Yeah. He just didn't want you to have two meetings, because...
I don't think he wants to have two meetings. But I'm, I'm just, I'm not speaking for Mr. Hawkins.
It's only forty minutes of his time.
That's true.
When are we going to have our pupil services night?
Well, we normally start bringing those to you over the summer, and we first will really do start off with attendance if we can.
I don't want Mrs. Madder to miss it, so...
I wouldn't be able to watch live streaming.
Not live streaming, no.
Not live.
Oh, darn.
Okay. So, and with that, Madam President, board members, I'd like to ask that we have an executive session prior to the personnel agenda, if you can, please.
Five minutes, we'll have an executive session. All of you who...
Your motion.
At the Landing Dental Spa, our goal is to provide quality dental care in a relaxed spa-like atmosphere. Dental chairs with heat and massage, warm neck wraps, and personal TVs make your appointment as stress-free as possible. Located off the Pier Pond exit, now accepting new patients of any age. Call three oh four, five nine four, twenty-two hundred today, and visit our website at www.theLandingDentalSpa.com to schedule an appointment. The Landing Dental Spa, a healthy smile with peace of mind. Welcome to Mile Ground Motors, where we specialize in used four-wheel-drive pickups and SUVs. All vehicles are clearly marked and come with a free car fax report. Fair, good, or excellent credit, we have the financing option for you. Mile Ground Motors, located on the Mile Ground in Morgantown. Always open at mileground.com.